Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the public meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners of June 7th order, and please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public announcements at this time? I'll just start by saying congratulations to all of those who prevailed in the primary on Tuesday night, and also a big shout out of thanks to public servants who might not have come out on top at that election, and for every candidate who put in the work and sweat and blood and tears to get out there and be willing to step up and try to serve in public office. There any public comment on items not on today's agenda today? Come on up to the mic. Hopefully, there's a green light on the base of the microphone, and go ahead and state your name for the record.
My name is Jeanette Zentgraf. I live in Lolo, and I have a statement here that I'd like to read if you don't mind. We were denied, by we, I mean the advocates for the republic, we were denied a meeting at which the facts below could have been considered by your board. Missoula County faces the same financial burdens that Lewiston, Maine experienced in 2002. Once an international organization obtains the authority to determine the size of a refugee or immigrant population, elected public servants are helpless. This situation worries us. We want our public servants to be in control. Karen Jacobson, Director of the Forced Migration Program at Tufts University's, Feinstein International Famine Center encouraged Lewiston, Maine, and their mayor, L'Oreal Raymond, to invite Somali immigrants in order to help his city as it had a dying economy. They came in 2001, the immigrants, and by 2002, he wrote an open letter to the Somali community begging them to stop encouraging friends and family to follow them to Maine. He was demonized for the letter, and the Somalis kept coming, followed by Sudanese, Congolese, and other Africans. By some estimates, 4,000 new immigrants arrived by 2009. In 2001, the Lewiston Adult Education Center had only 76 students learning English as a second language, and in 2009, there were 950 students being taught English. All this information has come from the Maine Legislative Library. Only half of the adult population worked. Those who did work did so in the three immigrant service agencies in Lewiston and in the Halel meat producer in Auburn, where there was time for prayer. Crimes of assault and rape have increased in Lewiston, indicated by police records, but not broadcast in the media. The National Limited English Proficiency Task Force asked the Justice Department to review Lewiston's programs and services to make sure that there was no discrimination for Somalis. In 2017, the state was in the process of reimbursing Lewiston $180,000 for general assistance and English language programs. The federal government had allocated $550,000 to Lewiston, but Lewiston still had to spend $382,250 for services and education needed by the immigrants. The state has a $900 million deficit, and Lewiston has received 795 Somalis during these last 20 months. They have applied for food stamps and housing. In 2015, an act to clarify the immigration status of non-citizens eligible for general assistance was limited to 24 months. That was Chapter 324 Public Law, SP 137, LD 369. The state legislature supported Governor Paul LePage, the, you know, governor, but the city of Portland and the media opposed this limit. It is important to note that the immigrants are coming from all over the United States, and in 2001 through, or I should say between 2001 and 2009, they were seeking peace and security in quiet, quaint Lewiston, only to have Lewiston become like the towns and cities they came from.
Ms. Zentgraf, you're at about three minutes.
All right. I thought that. I thought that. And I'd like to give this to you. I have included the law that limited the service for, may I just approach?
Yeah, give it to Sarah here. That would be great. Okay. Thank you very much. Additional public comment? Just as a reminder, if you can keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would be much appreciated, and if folks have not done so coming in, please sign in on the sheet at the back of the room so we have your names spelled correctly and know who is in attendance.
So my name is Renee Mitchell. I've been a resident of Missoula for about 52 years. Because of the limit of time, I'm going to help Jeanette out a little bit. Once towns, counties, and cities officially invite refugees or immigrants through an international agency, the public servants who are elected to protect their constituents from excessive taxes and unsafe communities can no longer even pretend to do that. Our Missoula Board of Commissioners wrote to the Bureau of Population, Refugees, and Migration, U.S. Department of State on January 13th in 2016, inviting 100 refugees per year to settle here through the opening of the International Rescue Committee. Our refugees may invite friends and family who are located anywhere in the U.S. because of Ted Kennedy's immigration law. I just want to say, I'm not, I'm not one that's going to say, tell these people that are here to leave, but because the public really didn't have any say in what the county commissioners wrote in their letter, I don't, I don't think this is something that is Democratic and Republican in our society. My husband was here before I was. He actually sponsored someone from Austria years ago, before I ever knew him, who came over from Austria, lived in his house, and my husband gave him a job. Now, that's what sponsorship's all about. It's not about the commissioners inviting people over and then telling them, my taxpayers' money has to go to support them. I would like to see more of that down-to-earth sponsorship. But on a positive note, I want to say where I, my home away from home is over at Larchmont Golf Course. It's in great shape, and I want to thank you very much for finally paving the road on Old Fort Road. That was a nightmare. And when you get to the other side to do post-sighting between the country club and Larchmont, thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and I wish we could take responsibility for that paving project. I don't know that we can, and it's within the city limits, but we'll take it anyway. Additional public comment? Come on up.
Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I promise not to read this at you, but at my age, some notes are helpful. My name's Michael Bennett. My wife and I are property owners in the airport industrial park, have a business out there, and I'm here today to speak to you about the, I don't think it's a proposal at this point, but the idea that's being kicked around to rezone the industrial park to allow residential development within the park. We bought our property and built our business 13 years ago. It's pretty much our big thing. We had to refinance our house and borrow every scrap of money we could get our hands on and spend day and night out there getting it going, hope everything worked the way it was supposed to. 13 years later, we're still in business, and we have seven employees. We pay them a livable wage and give full medical benefits to them. And as an aside, I want to thank the county for having the foresight to put that development park together, because when I was looking for a property for the business, it was tough. It was tough to find anything that was, you know, both zoned appropriately, the right size, and at all affordable for doing what we wanted to do. So that was a godsend to us. But we're concerned that this dismissed school proposal could endanger both our use of the property and other industrial uses for the property. I understand they have a problem. They're losing headcount, they don't have a lot of residential potential within their districts, and I sympathize with that, and I know that they're touting this as a way to provide affordable housing, and I know that's a worthy goal that we're all, you know, concerned with. But I think this is the wrong way to do it, and I think it solves, or attempts to solve a couple of problems in a way that creates other problems. I think all you have to do is look at what's going on out there with the Bitcoin mining operation in Bonner, where the residential use and the industrial use aren't working well together, and that's with a bunch of homeowners who are used to living next to a plywood mill for years and years and years. So I think that's the kind of thing that is being set up in this whole thing. And, you know, one of the things within, with the issue of affordable housing isn't just the price of homes, it's also the incomes in the community. One suggestion is to, you know, have the government or private industry try to put together cheaper houses, the other is to try to raise incomes. And one could address the notion of affordable housing by trying to encourage more manufacturing, better jobs. You might do that by taking the approach of saying, well, there's not enough industrial zone land. Let's let industry move in anywhere they want. Of course, if you did that, you might raise wages, but you'd have riots in the streets, so I don't think it would be well-advised. And essentially, what's being proposed in the industrial park is to do that, only having the industry be there first and move the houses in next to them. It's setting up exactly the kind of conflicts that zoning is allowed to, is intended to And even if someone could guarantee that everybody who moved into one of those houses doesn't have a problem with noise and light and semis starting up at 3:00 in the morning, you're still going to have the issue of taking more properties-owned industrial land out of the inventory, and from what I can tell, we're not making more. So I just wanted to come here, bring your attention to it. Like I say, I don't think it's to the point of being a serious written-up staff proposal yet, but just to go on record as a very concerned individual, that I would hope that you would not go down that road, and I appreciate your, yes?
No. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And I will follow up with an email to each of you in case anyone needs to get in contact or has any questions or just wants to tell me I'm all, you know, full of it, but.
Absolutely.
In any case, thank you.
The dismissed school district is the one that needs to hear your comment, too, because they're the ones proposing it, we aren't.
Yes, I realize that, and, but I think you're the body that would have the final say on it, so I wanted to.
Thank you.
Come here. Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Is there additional public comment on items not on today's agenda? Come on up.
My name is Patricia Lamb, and I have been in Missoula since 1958, so I consider myself a resident of here. Our taxes now are considerably more a year than what our house payment was when we bought our house, and I'm really concerned, and I don't intend to say that all of the refugee situation is the taxes. What we're saying is, we need to be paying attention to what's coming, because it's probably a certainty. In 2002, Governor Agnes King defended the Mayor Raymond, who was accused of racism, intolerance, et cetera, and he asked for more intergovernable help from Lewiston, from the Human Rights Commission, and from the Maine Housing Authority. Missoula, Montana isn't Maine, isn't Lewiston, but we are a city of about the same size, and we are facing so many race taxes. In 2015, the state legislature supported Governor Paul LePage, but the cities of Portland and Lewiston opposed capping general assistance at 24 months. The media was hostile to government, LePage's new legislation. On July 3rd, 2017, Meggan Doyle, a journalist, came with the Portland Press Herald, and she was quoted as saying, "24 months assistance cap has created a legal challenge, because Maine towns and cities do not know if their recipients had previously received aid when they were living in other Maine communities." We have an adopted Chinese couple that we sponsored and so on, not against it in any way, shape, or form, but as they said, "We didn't have any choice. You guys just took it upon yourself to load us up with it," and that's probably our main thing. If you wouldn't listen then, how are we going to get you to listen now before this thing snowballs? So I thank you for listening, and ask that you really kind of pay attention to what's going on out there. You get a tax bill just like I get a tax bill, and most of us get to the point we don't pay any attention where the money's going. It's your responsibility to pay attention to not only where it's coming, but where it's going. So thank you for your time, and I'm hoping that you pay attention.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Commissioner Curtis?
I just want to clarify that we only wrote a letter of support for putting that office here. We did not invite folks, and it's not on your local tax bill.
Yeah, I guess for the record, immigration and refugee settlement are federally regulated. They are not regulated at the local level, and the commissioners have no say in anything to do with it.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment on items not on the agenda?
Just to address the comment from the audience, we sent a letter of support for having a resettlement office here, which does not regulate who settles here. People can settle in places without a resettlement office as well. It's not, it's not inviting people here, it's not anything. It was supporting a resettlement office being placed here.
Okay. Is there additional public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Our current claims list received as of, claims received as of May 18, 2018, to May 31, 2018 by the Commissioner's Office totaled $1,869,972.21. And if you want a more detailed accounting of what are included in those claims, that claims total, if you go to our agenda on the Missoula County website, you can drill down and see what tallies up to that number. So we have five public hearings today, and once I open the public hearing, we'll receive a staff report, and then the public will be after, if there's a project proponent or applicant, after that individual speaks, there will be an opportunity for additional public comment on the item. So with that, I will open a public hearing on a proposed revision of a nuisance barking dog with staff report by, ah, yes?
Good afternoon. How are you today? I'm Jeff Dara. I'm supervisor of Missoula City County Animal Control. Thank you for having me here today. Barking dog ordinance. In 2014, we went through an effort to look at the ordinances in both the city and the county, and in that process, we wanted to make the city dog barking ordinance exactly the same as the county. The reason was, it was a little easier for the complainant to be able to keep a barking log, and so we were successful in being able to change the language in the city to match the county. But erroneously, I will take all the blame, because I'm the one that made the mistake. Through a cutting and pasting error, I changed the county ordinance as well, and changed it to the city ordinance that we wanted to change in the first place. So it hasn't been a big issue. I've only received one complaint in four years regarding the ordinance actually wanting it to match the city ordinance as we had changed it. So it hasn't been a real big issue, but the same person that contacted me also contacted Commissioner Strohmeyer. And to make it easier, it would be easier if the ordinance and the language in the county was, matched the city ordinance, just for process-wise. Both ordinances are pretty fair to dog owners. It's just the county ordinance, the way it's written right now is, a dog has to bark 30 minutes, well, actually, we have it right here, has to bark 30 minutes in a 24-hour period, and the complainant has to keep a log. As we proposed to match the city, it would say of at least five minutes with less than one minute of interruption, and that's what the county ordinance was up to 2014. So we're just basically reverting back to what the county ordinance was prior to 2014. Then the city bark ordinance and the county bark ordinance will match, and they will be the same. It will, it will be easier for us as well, but anyway, that's our proposal, is to change the language in a bark, bark complaint. Usually, when we get a bark complaint, it's neighbor versus neighbor, and we have to be the mediator and try to, we try to educate the person that has the dog first, and try not to get it to be where it's neighbor versus neighbor, but sometimes, by the time we get the complaint, it's already, it's already pretty hostile, so. But anyway, that's our proposal to the commission, is to change the language back to what it was.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Jeff, while you're still at the mic there, so, and I was not here in 2014, so we inadvertently changed it to match the, kind of, the city language that we, the city was actually in the process of change?
It matched the city perfect, but then we redid the city ordinances after we did the county ordinances, and we made the city what the county used to be. So again, that was my fault.
Cut along, cutting and pasting.
Yeah, cutting and pasting can be dangerous, but like I said, it hasn't been a huge issue. I've only had one complaint in four years, but just even one, I mean, there's, it makes total sense to go back to the way it was. You know, you don't always have to do everything the same way the city does, but it makes sense to go back to the way it was.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission? Motion?
I would move to approve an amendment to the Missoula County Animal Control Ordinance regarding barking dogs, as delineated on the screen.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Consider it changed. So our next public hearing, which I will open, is on the Missoula City Smoking Ordinance and the proposal to extend extraterritorial powers five miles outside of the city limits related to the ordinance. Shannon Ontario?
Hi, thank you very much. I'm going to share this presentation with Kayla Warren, but I will get it started. So just a brief little bit of history. In 1999, the City Council of Missoula adopted a smoking ordinance and was actually the first in the state to have a local ordinance that prohibited smoking in most indoor public places and in places of work. And then there were other local ordinances that came about, and finally, in 2005, the Montana Legislature adopted the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act, which had a couple of different effective dates, but by 2009, it applied to every public indoor place, including bars and casinos and places of work. And so it pretty much made the city ordinance obsolete. The city had some, the city ordinance had some exemptions that weren't allowed by state law anymore, and frankly, we just didn't pay attention to it. We paid attention to the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act instead. And so as Jim Carlson was leaving, he said, "I am going to get this taken care of, I'm going to clean this up." And part of what we talked about then, and then talked about later again, is should we just ask to have the whole thing repealed and depend on the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act? Or should we update, ask the city council to update the ordinance? So there were three things that led us to asking for an update instead of just an all-out appeal. One is that we have a smoking shelter policy that we've used in the Health Department for a long time. The Montana Clean Indoor Air Act is kind of short on some details, and this really helped people understand what it meant to build a smoking shelter, what it meant for that not to be an enclosed public place. It served us very well, and having it in the ordinance would make it easier to find and maybe even more enforceable, although we were able to enforce it under the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act. The city parks had a no-smoking policy for places where a lot of kids congregate and play, and they were interested in that being part of an ordinance as well. And then vaping and e-cigarettes is something that's not covered under the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act, and something that definitely has public health implications, which Kayla will talk about later. And so this was an opportunity to include that in the city ordinance. So as we were talking about this, the, we talked to the Health Board several times about it, starting last year, or maybe even the year before, and they adopted a resolution in January of 2018 to encourage the city council to make some changes to the ordinance, and those exact changes I'll go through in a little bit. But after the Health Board adopted the resolution, we talked with a number of agencies, especially when we were talking about enforcement of the ordinance, and to the commissioners about what was going forward, and then took it to the city council. The city council, of course, had a committee meeting on it, it went to hearing. It actually was sent back to committee because they were looking at this idea of exempting vape shops, certain vape shops, from prohibiting smoking indoors. One of the, ultimately, what they decided is that that was not a good public health protection, that it was unfair to other businesses that sold vape products, and that it set bad precedent, so they didn't go that direction. They actually adopted revisions in March, March 19, 2018, that pretty much mirrored what the Health Board had recommended, which I will talk about in a second. So part of this is that this smoking ordinance, the reason we're talking to you about it, is that the smoking ordinance is a health ordinance, and there is a part of state law in Title VII that allows the mayor to apply a health ordinance for five miles outside of the city limits. However, he can only do that if both the Health Board and the commissioners agree that it be applied outside of the city limits. The 1999 ordinance was approved and did apply for that five miles outside the city limits. There have been questions that have been asked about, well, why not just make this county-wide? And it, it's most likely that the Health Board does have powers to regulate, to adopt regulations county-wide, but we really haven't looked at that very deeply. That's something that we would need to investigate. I mean, it doesn't say, "Health Board, you have the ability to adopt regulations about smoking or indoor air," so, but they have pretty broad authorities that we would need to look at. But really, what this, what started is, this started as, we need to clean up the city ordinance. I mean, we need to clean it up, we, because it is less strict than state law, so it's confusing. It has some exemptions, so, that aren't allowed anymore, so we needed to make it less confusing, and that's how we got down the path that we got down. And then, as we talked about at an earlier time, Kayla will show you a map. We're not the only city or local entity that has a local smoking ordinance that prohibits vaping specifically and in indoor public places. And so really, as more local, as there's more and more support on the local level, that makes, there's a better chance that it would be applied statewide, which is really the ultimate goal, is to have the public health protections of this ordinance apply across the state of Montana to every citizen and resident and visitor in Montana. So when we talk about extraterritorial application, this is a map of what it means to be five miles outside of the city limits. You could see that it would include East Missoula, it would include Bonner and Tura, I mean, excuse me, Bonner and Milltown, Lolo, out at the Y. And this health ordinance, the law recognizes that oftentimes, cities don't cover, the city limits don't cover- limits don't cover all of the area that is urban, urbanized, urban development. That's one of the reasons why. Okay, so what am I talking about? So the city council did approve changes to delete any provisions that were less stringent than state law, and they clarified enforcement procedures and penalties for applying this both inside the city and should you approve it outside the city limits for those five miles? So that's good. But really, if you don't approve it, what the five mile zone in the rest of the county would be left with is the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act. And so I want to highlight what's different between the city ordinance and the Montana Clean Indoor Air Act, and that are these last four bullet points. One is that it incorporates a very clear smoking shelter policy to make it very clear about what it takes to build a smoking shelter that is not considered an enclosed public place. It also provides businesses with the ability to prohibit smoking either in their outdoor spaces or within twenty-five feet of any openings. Really, probably somebody would have the ability to prohibit smoking on their own property, but this helps in areas where that might be less clear. We've had business owners call us and say, well, under what authority can I put up a sign? And that is one of the things that the smoking ordinance does. It makes it very clear that they have authority to put up a sign and that people can't smoke in that area. It also gives owners, the managers of outdoor spaces, for instance, like county parks, and Kayla's going to take over in just a second here to talk about city parks, but county parks, the ability to prohibit smoking in areas, especially where a lot of children play. I think you're going to talk about that. So I'm going to turn it over to Kayla now. You going to come in here?
Thank you.
So my name's Kayla. I'm with the Health Department. So yes.
Kayla, what's your last name, by the way?
Lauren.
Okay, thank you.
So prohibiting smoking in certain outdoor public places, like Shannon said earlier, we really, we wanted to clean up this ordinance, but at the same sense, add in these extra health provisions that can now be offered outside of the city limits, especially in city parks. So the big thing with the smoke-free parks is that not only does it protect against secondhand smoke exposure, which was huge considering who utilizes our parks, its families, its kids, its community members, but also it really reduces the amount of cigarette butts, which is the number one discarded waste, and it's not biodegradable. And then the third piece is when we were discussing this last year, this was also during the height of all the fires and everything. So having this place, this in place really reduces the chance of fire happening. So that was kind of a big one on that. And this is kind of what our smoke-free parks and smoke-free zones would look like, just including the e-cigarettes in there as well, just as a precaution. But again, so that's what they would look like moving forward. But the big one is vaping. And we kind of stuck this in there just as, one, it's strong public health to work forward with this and not backwards, because quite frankly, e-cigarettes are the most commonly used tobacco products here, especially in Montana youth. So close to fifty percent of all Montana high school students have tried some form of electronic cigarette, whether that's a mod, vapor, or vaping, a Juul. So fifty percent, and then about twenty-nine percent are current users. That's a huge number. So what's kind of nerve-wracking is we're basically, a new generation of smokers are coming down the pipe. So how do we kind of eliminate that from happening? And as we know, e-cigarettes contain nicotine, it's a highly addictive substance. It's really hard on a developing brain. So when you think about how many kids are using this product, and yet it's, brain's not fully developed until you're about twenty-five, so obviously, that just kind of outweighs the positive there. And then e-cigarettes contain, or the aerosol contain ultrafine particles and some heavy metals such as nickel tin and lead, according to the CDC. So anytime you're exposed to that, even some of our most vulnerable population, if you think about, a lot of times adults say, well, I'm just vaping, it's not a big deal. However, if they have small children around them, or there's a pregnant mother, and they're inhaling these aerosols, that's kind of what we're trying to prevent. So that was a big piece. And then finally, they're not approved by the FDA as a cessation tool or quit aid. A lot of people may have said that it's helped them quit or helped them wean off, but it's not approved. And in fact, sixty-one point five percent of e-cigarette users are also tobacco users. So you're using a dual substance there. But the one thing, though, that the FDA has approved is that they are now considered a tobacco product, so they can be deemed as such. So with that, you can, they're monitored, now there's age restriction. So you'll notice you have to be eighteen or older now, but prior to that, there wasn't any. So that's kind of, kind of why our rates were so high right away, is because the access to them was so easy. So reducing access really does help. So because this was approved in the city limits here, Missoula is now the ninth local entity in the state of Montana to have e-cigarettes included in their Clean Indoor Air Act protocols. We also are the fourth to have the smoking distance provision, which is kind of neat. But these are the other counties that are highlighted in the other blue, I don't know, in the lighter blue. But yes, so we're not the first, we're not the last, but we're moving forward. And like Shannon said, hopefully, as small, as each local county starts to make these changes, we might see a big change from state law down the road, hopefully. So with that, our recommended motion is that the commissioners approve the Missoula's revised smoking ordinance, Missoula Municipal Code Title VIII, Chapter thirty-seven, as amended by the Missoula City Council on March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to allow the ordinance to be in effect within five miles of the city limit.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? Or a motion would be in order?
So I sit on the Board of Health, so I've heard this discussion once or twice. But I would move that the commissioners approve Missoula's revised smoking ordinance, Missoula Municipal Code Title VIII, Chapter thirty-seven, as amended by the Missoula City Council on March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to allow the ordinance to be in effect within five miles of the city limits.
Second?
Further discussion? I would just say that, yeah, I'm supportive of this. I would also support the Health Department and Health Board looking into our ability to regulate smoking countywide, because I don't see it as being a legitimate distinction between urban and rural. Wherever smoking occurs, it's going to have impacts similarly. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Luckily, smoking is countywide, but not vaping. And this piece allows restaurants on the, like, on their decks, which is the nice piece. So yeah, countywide would be great.
Good distinction. So our next item is a public hearing on the Tandy family transfer as proposed. And we have a staff report.
Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. The property we're looking at today for the proposal is located west of the Clark Fork River and Big Flat Road. The current lot is approximately forty-two acres in size and is bisected by Sherman Gulch Road. There's two existing structures on the property that you can see here that are addressed. The property is zoned CA two, which is an agricultural and residential zoning district. The residential zoning is one dwelling unit per ten acres. The proposal we're looking at today does not exceed the density of the zoning district. The request is also in compliance with other zoning regulations such as setback and minimum lot width. Here's the proposal that we're looking at today. The proposed transfer would result in two tracts. Tract one would be approximately ten acres in size and transferred to Cheryl Tandy's daughter. The remaining tract two, approximately thirty-two acres in size, and will hold both of the existing dwelling units, will be held by Cheryl Tandy herself. The applicant has stated that both of the tracts will be used for residential purposes. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis with the proposal. One of the rebuttable presumptions and a few of the general evasion criteria were triggered with the application that the staff noted and bold in the report. The rebuttable presumption that was triggered with the analysis was if a transfer of a tract of land by one family member to another by quitclaim deed is followed by an attempted use of this exemption on the same tract. David Tandy and Cheryl Tandy transferred the tract to singular ownership of Cheryl Tandy in two thousand and fifteen. The general evasion criteria that were triggered with the application was if, has the proposed division for this tract been previously denied under review of the MSPA or any other exemptions? Proposed use of the family transfer exemption on the same tract was denied by the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners on October twenty-sixth of two thousand and seventeen. At that time, the request was to split two ten-acre tracts from the parent parcel. The final general evasion criteria triggered with the proposal was if the proposed division is incompatible with the growth policy. The proposed division will result in residential development in an area that's designated open and resource. Open and resource areas are generally recommended a density of one dwelling unit per forty acres. The resulting density with this proposal will be approximately one dwelling, one dwelling unit per thirteen point three acres. Staff is recommending that the request by Cheryl Tandy to utilize the family transfer to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter, Kalen Anderson, to be approved. And I have a few questions for the applicant, if you'd like to come forward. If you could just state your name for the record.
My name is Cheryl Tandy.
Cheryl, could you just bend that, the top of that down a little bit? Just the tip is.
Oh, just the tip.
There you go.
No problem.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
We did eventually plan to give our daughters some land, but she was like, very small when we first bought it.
Did you or your transfers intend to transfer the property within the next year?
You mean to her?
Well, or her.
She's not planning to transfer it.
Okay. Have you talked to anyone at the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed?
They might build on it eventually.
Okay.
They're in Minneapolis.
Okay. And will the recipient of the property be residing on the property? So you kind of just follow that?
They would be, yes.
Okay. Perfect, that concludes my questions.
Mr. and Mrs. Tandy, anything else you'd like to add at this time? Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any additional, or any public comment on this family transfer? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or discussion by the commission? Or a motion?
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request for a family transfer, the request from Cheryl Tandy to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her daughter, Kalen Anderson. I'd move that we approve it.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Saw someone from the media coming with a camera. If you're here for the smoking ordinance, you're too late. Maybe you're just getting B-roll, or maybe you're looking for some subdivision extensions. Okay, thank you. Just don't want to waste your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing, which I'll open, is on an extension request for the Bent Grass Meadows subdivision.
All right, thank you. So this is a request from Carl Sanders, the developer of Bent Grass Meadows subdivision, represented today by Territorial Land Works, to extend the final plat summing deadlines for Phase One and Two from March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to December twenty, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, respectively. So Bent Grass Meadows is located about a mile and a half northwest of the Y at ninety-three ninety-three Highway Ten West. It's near the intersection of Pulte Mill Road. The subdivision was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on March nineteenth of two thousand and eight and subject to twenty-six conditions of approval. In two thousand and eight, the commissioners approved splitting the subdivision into two phases. Phase one consists of lots one through ten, twenty-seven, thirty-four, thirty-four through thir, excuse me, thirty-four through eighty-three, and utility lot one and two. Phase two consists of lots eleven through twenty-six and twenty-eight through thirty-three. That phasing plan was approved with filing deadlines in March of two thousand and fourteen and March of two thousand and sixteen. The applicant then received approval to extend the final plat deadlines for Phase One to March nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen and March, or excuse me, in Phase Two to March nineteenth of two thousand and twenty. So that's the current phasing plan deadline. As I previously mentioned, the current request is to extend the final plat summing deadlines for Phase One and Phase Two. As you can see on the screen, Phase One is March nineteenth of two thousand and eighteen, and the request is to extend that to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Phase Two currently expires March nineteenth of two thousand and twenty and is requested to extend to December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. The subdivision regulations only allow extensions in three-year increments, so staff is recommending a final plat deadline of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for both phases. We did send this out for agency comments and received comment from the county attorney's office, and they too noted that the extension request could not be granted for more than the three-year increment as permitted by the regulations. MDT also commented that the traffic study initiated in the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight era was never completed and will need to be completed prior to final plat of Phase One. Staff reviewed the conditions of approval and is recommending an amendment to make it clear that this study is needed to be completed by the developer prior to filing Phase One. So again, staff is recommending approval of these extensions to the year two thousand and twenty-one with the amended conditions as shown in Attachment G.
Thank you. Would the applicant or applicant's representative like to speak to this? Come on up.
Carl Saunders. I'll turn the top part up for you. I don't really have anything else to say other than it's becoming closer to being viable to go through with the subdivision and hasn't been in the past, so that's why we've asked for an extension.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Saunders. Any additional public comment? Oh, come on up. Yeah.
Andy Short, Territorial Land Works. I'm a land use consultant. Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Carl said there. It's the, there's some extensive infrastructure that needs to be installed, and it's, was viable at the time we were developing it, and the viability went away, and so we're just trying to extend that, so that we can, we can keep all that work that we did in the past.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comment on this extension request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions, discussion by the commission?
Nope. I would move that the extension request for Phase One and Two of Bent Grass Meadows subdivision be approved from March nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen and March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, to March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for both phases, subject to the amended conditions presented by staff in Attachment G.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. So our fifth and final public hearing today, which I'll open, is an extension request, phasing plan extension request for Phases Three, Four, Five, Six, and Six of Running W Ranch subdivision. Jamie, staff report.
Thanks, Dave. So this request is from Williams Development LLP, the developer of Running W Ranch subdivision, represented by WGM Group, to extend the final plat deadlines as you just described. as you just described. So Running W Ranch subdivision is an 11-phase subdivision with 350 lots on 184 acres located northeast of the Y. The subdivision was approved by the Board of County Commissioners on August 31st, 2005, subject to 33 conditions of approval. Since then, Phases 1 and 2 have been filed, and three additional extension requests have been approved, the most recent one in 2014. The applicant's representative states that the current request for an extension reflects the leg in the market over the past few years. They noted that while lot sales and building permits in the county are on the upswing, they are still less than the market high in 2007. Demands are rising for affordable workforce housing close to the city, and the applicant feels he can meet the need within the Running W subdivision. However, the extension request would be required to continue with this subdivision. The proposed final, final plat's middle deadlines are listed above. We did send this out for agency comment as well. However, we did not receive any back, or if we did, it was a no comment or concern. So staff is recommending approval of the phasing plan extension for Phases 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Running W Ranch subdivision to May 31st of 2021.
Thank you. Would the applicant's representative like to say anything? Okay. It's a public hearing. Is there any additional public comment on this extension request? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Questions, discussion by the commission?
I would move that we approve the phasing plan extensions for Phases 3, 4, 5, and 6 of Running W Ranch subdivision to May 31st, 2021, as presented by staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thanks for that. That concludes all of our business on the agenda. Is there any other business to be brought before the commission? Seeing none, we'll be in recess. Thank you.